We'll get started, start the workshop. Did it get turned on? Do we know if it's on TV? It was back there. Good to go. All right. We'll get started and make sure we have enough time just to discuss. Just a little background information. The tree board, we've had a lot of discussions recently on the role of the tree board and how some of the processes in place happen. We asked Mr. Owen to review some of the ordinances and manuals to help better explain what our current ordinances in place state and also the role of the tree board as it pertains to these ordinances in subdivisions, commercials, or residential. We also asked him to review what processes have been used on previous developments and how effective these practices have been. So hopefully we'll have an opportunity for all of us just to obtain a better understanding of the process of regulations in place. We're going to go over, there's a few things in your packet. There's a tree protection, tree planting, infection ordinance, TT, TPO in there. Then there's also a list of ordinance changes all the way back, dating back to 97. And then the protection ordinance that you have, you'll see some highlights and some notes. Those are just where Mr. Owen has kept up with some notes while ordinances have changed over time. And then you also have a small excerpt from the design review manual which states a little bit about the trees and requirements. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Owen. I told him I was going to lean on him hard tonight just to show us his findings and kind of start the workshop, discuss the ordinances, the changes over the history of the tree protection plan and kind of where we stand with it now.
Thank you, Brandon. You guys can listen to me talk. For those of you that are familiar with me, know that I can talk for the whole 40 minutes or whatever we have, 50, 49 minutes, but I don't necessarily want to do that. I hope you've had a chance to look at some of that material and the history kind of of the, what's currently called the tree planting and protection ordinance. Ordinance number... Well, it's, I guess incorporated into the code in section, chapter four, section 13 of the city code. So it was originally adopted in 97, and I'll spare you going through all the details, but as you can see, there were, there was a flurry. It existed from 97 to 2001 without any real, well, any changes at all. 2001 had some somewhat significant changes. 2002, 2003, 2004, and 2007 also included some changes with, kind of 2007 being the last kind of complete overhaul, if you will. There were some updates in 2010, 13, and 14 that were just minor updates that pertain to specific sentences or even specific sections in the tree planting and protection ordinance. So it's taken a number of different turns, and as we've all come to discover, when there are changes to a standalone document like the tree planting and protection ordinance that has portions of those requirements either referenced or incorporated into other adopted documents such as the zoning ordinance, the subregs, and the design review manual, there were some amendments to the tree planting and protection ordinance that either did not get completely incorporated into those other documents or was incorporated with different, maybe different standards than what was in that tree planting and protection ordinance. So there's some discrepancies in place in the currently adopted ordinance and then in your other three documents that are currently utilized to review submittals both for subdivision of property, whether that's residential or commercial, and also development of property, whether that's multifamily, residential, commercial, or industrial. So Brandon, along with Mr. Hall, kind of asked me to, I guess summarize kind of that history, and so that's what you see before you in that history and summarization. And then to further add complexity, there are, there have been some practices utilized by staff in the past that really weren't in any, any of the adopted documents. For instance, the tree density worksheet. I find no reference to a tree density worksheet in any, either the tree planting and protection ordinance, or the design review manual, the zoning ordinance, or the subregs. So while that's not necessarily a bad practice, it's a practice that wasn't formally adopted in any requirement or regulation. So things along that nature. And then also, there's been some, I guess, a desire to have a greater understanding of roles and responsibilities when it comes to review of plans that have been submitted to the city with regard to the tree board, the tree commission, and the planet commission, and the BOC, and kind of how, how that's happened in the past, what that's looked like, what it currently looks like, and maybe what it should look like based on what's adopted. And then even more important than that is, what do we want it to look like? That's, to me, that's where I want to spend the most time, unless you object, is we can hash out the history, we can hash out what should be required, what shouldn't be required, who has done this and that in the past, but I think it may be more productive for the city to really look at, moving forward, how can we, as a city, have a more comprehensive review of all landscaping plans? Not just replacement calculations, but, and not just, you know, types of trees or shrubs that are desired, but the location of those trees as it pertains to perimeter landscaping around the perimeter of a lot, as it pertains to interior landscaping within a proposed parking or asphalt area, as it pertains to screening landscaping, whether it's transitional screening between land uses or nuisance screening of dumpsters or HVAC equipment, and then also foundational plannings around buildings. So I say all that to say, I've never viewed it as my job, whether it's this specific aspect of a regulation or any other aspect, to really give you an opinion on what your thresholds of regulation should be, but more of a, here's what you currently have on the books. If I was a third party coming in, this is what I would design to and expect to be approved if I met that design, and if it didn't, then I might have some, some legal means to say, hey, I've met your requirements in writing that you've adopted. What you may or may not be holding me to beyond that really isn't, isn't allowed. So, you know, I think there's, there's opportunity to not only streamline the review process, but also fortify both the review process on the front end and approval process, and then also the subsequent follow-up for issuing COs and then inspecting properties to make sure that, you know, they've, they've been constructed according to the approved plan. So that's kind of where the general synopsis. I can tell you that it's my interpretation of kind of the history of the tree protection and planning ordinance that the tree commission, I think, was, again, all I have to go by is the documents. And so it's hard to infer intent from the documents, but based on the language that was adopted, it appeared to be the tree commission was created as kind of an advisory board to have a big picture view of green spaces and landscaping desires of the city as a whole. And within that context, to create desirable plant lists, to create a criteria for protection plans for existing vegetation, both on public property and private property to be developed, and then also to be responsible for the oversight and upkeep of landscaping materials within public property, within right-of-way or city-owned property. I don't, I don't think necessarily that it was the intention for the planning, or the tree commission to be a day-to-day or month-to-month oversight commission on a project-specific basis. It was more of, they were creating these parameters of what, what they desired to see, the features to be retained by, on developed property, and then they handed, again, this is my interpretation and intention, they were handing those thresholds, those criterias over to the planet commission for them to care and keep and enforce and utilize in their review of site plans and subdivisions and that sort of thing. So, but as we all know, at some point, that, that, I guess, shifted to a degree, and there was some language, and currently is still some language, that says the tree commission is, I believe, is to review tree protection plans for any development that requires a, basically, an agreement, a contract agreement with the city. But then when you, so they've given, they've been given that task currently in the current documents, but there's nothing in the current documents that specify what specific trees are to be protected. So there's, there's kind of some discontinuity there that I think we can really improve upon in how you move forward in your process and procedures. And, you know, you've got a tremendous resource in Mr. Berkeley and, you know, his knowledge of plant life and horticulture and anything associated with that is, as far exceeds certainly mine, and I would assume anyone else on, on either of these commissions. So I think, one thing that I've seen in other communities that works really well, that has kind of a similar overarching body or advisory body such as your tree commission, is they have, in their staff review process, they have either a city staff person or somebody that sits on that tree commission that is a part of the staff review process, is a part of developing comments pertaining to the landscaping requirements. And I think Mr. Berkeley would be a good resource to utilize if all other things, you know, beyond my control as far as city employee and how all that works, or employee responsibilities. But, you know, I can envision a process where Mr. Berkeley is involved, and is now, but even to a greater degree, to basically allow that representative to review plans that have been submitted for not only the density and the protection, but the entire landscape requirements. Because I think that's where maybe there's been some things that have fallen in the cracks in that, you know, when I first came to the city, my understanding was the tree commission reviewed all things landscaping, and the planet commission and the staff that were associated with the planet commission basically just took a complete hands-off approach. And in going back and looking at some, some developments, it, there was, appeared to be some discontinuity or disjointedness in maybe the commission reviewed on certain parameters, but maybe the tree commission reviewed on certain parameters that they wanted to see and desired to see and maybe had adopted, but some of the more specifics within the designer view manual were maybe kind of omitted. So, so there's been some things that, that I think there's, because of the misunderstanding of who's responsible for what, and is it tree commission, is it planet commission, is it BOC, is it city staff, is it, you know, I think you have an opportunity now to clarify that process, clarify whose responsibility it is to make sure that all plans meet not just what's in the tree protection plan, but also all other landscaping requirements, and have kind of a one-stop shop, a clearinghouse, a one-stop clearinghouse, so to speak, that says if there's a landscaping issue, the ball stops there, they're, they're responsible for all landscaping matters, irrigation, you know, location, number. And they, they include that in the staff review comments, and that gets filtered through the planet commission, and the planet commission then is responsible for not just the site plan components, but also the plant, the landscaping components as the ultimate authority and, and I guess, approval body. So, because I think there's also been some instances where a site plan has been approved by the planet commission. Let me go back. A landscaping plan has been approved by the tree commission or recommended for approval by the tree commission. Comes to the planet commission, the site plan is approved by the planet commission. Work is started, there needs to be, for whatever reason, an amendment to the landscaping plan. So that landscaping plan went back to the tree commission, and as a result of maybe that amendment, there were some slight tweaks to the actual site plan components, maybe some of the parking configuration was reoriented in a certain degree. So the tree commission reviewed that change to the landscaping plan and approved it, but the planet commission never saw, was never aware of, or even staff was aware to say, hey, these changes to the landscaping plan also have a domino effect to the actual site plan, and so therefore, the planet commission, or at least staff, should have said, hey, we need to take a broader look than just this revision to the landscaping. So, and that's where kind of the ball, some, some things have fallen in the cracks on, well, there's this revised plan, but staff or planet commission didn't see it, or the tree commission didn't see that change, or this change to the parking revises the landscaping plan, and the tree commission never saw it. So, so that, both instances, I think, have occurred in the past, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. You know, you were discussing that, how the tree commission was originally set up, and I kind of got lost.
Okay.
So forgive me. But according to 13-404, the duties of the tree commission are pretty well laid out, and I realize it's been struck through.
Okay.
But when was that changed? To review in your applications for and determined by vote the granting or denial of permits regulating the planning, pruning, maintenance, and removal of trees on streets and other publicly-owned property. And that's been struck through on my copy, but...
Well, that's highlighted, I'm sorry. That's a highlight, yes.
Say I took that as struck through.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. That's a highlight for me.
Okay.
So, yes. No, none of that has changed.
We need to get you a better highlighter.
Yes. Well, photocopies of highlights aren't always representative, so, no, that, that hasn't changed, that's still applicable.
Okay.
All those items are still applicable.
Okay. So in the note you made on, number two?
Uh-huh.
I can't read your note.
Okay.
What does that say?
So number two is to review all tree protection plan proposals relating to subdivision development and site development plans for submission to the planet commission for review. And it says, "See Appendix Item B." So Appendix Item B, and then if you look down at the footnote, Appendix Item B has been added to this chapter as 13-420. So my note says, when you go to 13-420, all that references is a site development agreement or development contract. So it, it is. There's, there's kind of multiple layers of, well, when is it required? Are subdivisions required? Are they not? If they are, then what, what is required to be protected in a subdivision? Because really, the only protection requirements as far as setting the threshold of what should be protected are found in the designer view manual. And the designer view manual says, any tree, excuse me, which I think you have a copy of it. Yes. On the second page, 2 dash, so the first page of what I'm looking at says, the top heading is development subject to designer view. Okay? That's the designer view manual, that's an excerpt. And then if you turn over to the back page of the first sheet, it says tree removal. When the site layout makes it necessary to remove, to remove a tree having a caliper of 10 inches or more. So there's the threshold. So the designer view, review manual says, when a site layout plan requires for a tree of 10 inches or more to be removed, then there are some criteria listed on what has to go back as far as a density amount. The problem is, or the concern is, the designer view manual has, does not apply to subdivisions in any manner. It is purely applicable only to multifamily development, so apartments, commercial, and industrial. So again, there's some complexities on, when you start to follow the chain of when things, or what is required, you start to see it breaks down as far as, if Mr. Larry had to go to court and defend, well, this is why it's required, and this is where we state that it's required. When you start to follow the dominos, there's, there's a breakdown there. So, one thing you might...
Wait a minute. Let me back up again to my original question.
Uh-huh.
Because during your history, you said that there was never any, I got the impression, what I heard as you say, that you really did not think the tree commission was ever established to review plans. But to me, 13-404 says that's exactly what we're supposed to do. Maybe I just misunderstood you.
Right. And that's, that has been, that's what it's evolved to. But again, the only thing, the only part of any plan that is to be reviewed by the tree commission is a protection plan. So not the landscaping plan, not the density, just the protection plan that says, these are the, these are the trees on the site that we desire to retain on the site, and this is the protection plan for those trees.
And the removal, if there's any removal of trees. 13-404, the pruning, maintenance, and removal of trees on streets or other publicly-owned property.
That's just for publicly, public property. That, that...
Not development, not commercial development.
Item number, correct. Item number one has, doesn't pertain to any private property at all. Item two is the only item that I'm, that I'm seeing that's, that is pertaining to private developments.
And it says subdivision development.
Right.
It doesn't say multifamily, it says subdivision.
Well, and this is, this is where I'm confused, because again, in that, in number three, to compose and annually review a community tree plan that shall include but not limited to such elements as an authorized tree specimen list, which we have, a tree protection plan, including a tree replacement schedule, which is so many words as the tree density worksheet.
Right.
It's the worksheet.
And a city tree bank, which we have. So...
I mean, see, I'm getting real lost where you're saying it's, what we were intended, what the tree commission was set up to do, when it appears that we go through what we were set up to do.
Right. And that's, and again, that's what it's evolved to. My, I guess my initial comments were the initial setup of, of that, so, which is the 97 ordinance, so to speak.
Okay, but, okay.
But, Mr. Berkeley, here, so here's, in playing devil's advocate, so I read number three, "To compose and annually review a community tree plan that shall include but not limited..." Okay. So if I'm a developer, I say, okay, show me your community tree plan that you've adopted, and I'll be glad to abide by those requirements. We don't have one. We have it dispersed through three different documents.
Okay. What do you mean, we don't have one? I mean, I, but it says...
Isn't that what the rest of this pretty much is? That's what, and I guess I'm confused, but you're interpreting...
It says that it...
...tree protection plan is, what is a tree protection plan? In your experience with other areas, what is a tree protection plan? What do they have in a tree protection plan?
Usually, they will require, you mean the specific requirements?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, because we got, I think we got specifics in here.
What, what, what I see, what I see in other communities is that they don't have, if you want to, if you want to adopt criteria for tree protection, you incorporate those requirements into the zoning ordinance.
Can you give me an example?
Not a standalone, yeah. The city of Murfreesboro has, the landscaping portion of the city of Murfreesboro's zoning ordinance is that thick, and it includes measures for what's required on protection of existing trees.
So are you proposing maybe rewriting?
I, I think, yes, I think it absolutely needs to be, some of the language has got to be rewritten to be more consistent between all the documents. Because, again, I see, it says, it says, "To review all tree protection plan proposals relating to subdivision development." Okay, great. But when, but then you look at Appendix Item B, which that number two references, and it says, okay, Appendix Item B has been added to this chapter's 13-420. So you go over to 13-420, and you have a tree protection plan. A tree protection plan should be required for any site that requires a development contract or a site development agreement.
Which translates that into, what does that, does that mean subdivisions and anything that has come through the city to be approved?
That does, yes.
Okay.
Yes. But then it goes into the specifics of the plan.
Right.
To locate, to show the location, size, and variety of all trees with four-inch or greater DVIH. Which, to me, that right there is, is conflicting. Because there's no reason to show anything less than 10 inches, because there's no requirement that says anything less than 10 inches that you take out, you have to replace with an equivalent. You see, you see the discrepancy there?
So it should be 10 inches.
The tree protection plan should be signed and stamped by the person preparing the plan, plan should accompany the preliminary plat of the site, which that's poor language there, because if it's a site plan, there's, there is no such thing as preliminary plat. So I know it sounds like semantics, but again, it won't be. Right, yes. And so then you get into a little more specific. It says, "No clearing, grading, or trimming prior to a plan approval. Prior to any clearing, grading, or removal of trees from any applicable site, a tree protection plan should have been reviewed by trees approved by the planet commission." So the review takes place by the tree commission, but the planet commission still has the approval of that protection plan. The tree protection plan will ensure that the clearing, grading, and or removal of trees will form in accordance with good flood, erosion, and sedimentation control practices, tree protection. So then we get into specifics of what the protection actual element should be as far as the four-by-four posts, the four-feet-high fencing, how far from the drip line it should be. And so, so you've got the specifics of, if you're protecting a tree, this is what the protection mechanism should look like. But again, we don't, there's nothing that says you have to protect, protect any existing trees. Does that make sense?
No, because if it's the ordinance, why does it not say that?
Where does it say that any existing tree of a certain size or in a certain area has to be... Where does it say that any existing tree of a certain size or in a certain area has to be retained on site? Or else?
Well, I think the tree inventory list, when they bring the plan to the Tree Commission, you know, they, they bring the inventory list. They also show what trees they're taking out, what trees they're leaving. Any tree they leave, they have to do the protection. Isn't that correct, Michael?
Well, you understand.
But that's not specified in here.
Just thinks 10 inches or more. Am I right?
Well, right, I mean, that's, the caliper would have to be changed, but, but-
That says under you, still be bouncing around.
Right, so, so I mean, again, I-
I mean, one day, I'm sorry, I mean, I realize that we probably, I mean, the ordinance should have said, any tree you leave on the site must be protected. Is that the sentence that's missing?
There, certain, there needs to be something that says, here's what tree has to be protected.
So any tree on your inventory list that you're planning to leave on site has to be protected, according to these standards.
But shouldn't it, shouldn't it read, any tree that you're leaving on your inventory site that's 10 inches or more?
Right, well, yeah, the 10 inches.
Should be protected, not any trees.
Yeah, 10 inches.
Or protection measures should be provided on the tree, should be shown and provided on the tree protection plan. Because if you're in a wooded area, they're obviously not going to go put four by four posts around every single tree that, but they're, you know, and that, see, that's not specified in here. If it's a wooded area, you know, instead of protecting each individual tree, let's, you know, maybe let's require that orange barricade fence along the wood line, and therefore no construction activity, you know, without an amendment to the plan can take place beyond that, that orange barricade. That's just an example, but-
So what is, what is the Franklin, Brentwood, what does their plan look like?
I can't speak to it. I can look it up, I can research it, but I, I'm not familiar with their specific plan.
Mike, are you familiar with it at all?
Somewhat, I mean.
Well, you know, what would make sense to me, when they start revising this, like, you know, the standard review committee was doing, and all of this being the planning commission, and maybe, Tree Commission may be in a joint session, but obviously, if you're going to have this stuff and police it and require it, you're going to have to do it under the policing power, that's the only way you can do it. A zoning ordinance is under policing power. But what should happen, this is not a zoning ordinance, it's a tree protection ordinance, but when they start to revise this, and I may be way out in left field, but the, the ordinance is not the place to put these specifics. What that ordinance should say is, see, design review manual-
Yes.
And/or
Agreed.
Subdivision regulations, section such and such.
Yes.
And there you put your specifics.
Yep.
And you don't get into this, what applies first, because if you got into one of these things, the municipal code is the city bible. So if you've got a situation where this zoning ordinance says this, I mean, I'm sorry, this design review manual says this, this subdivision reg says this, and the ordinance says something different, they're going to have to take a backseat to the ordinance. You don't do design specifics in, in an ordinance.
Right.
You just refer to it, and then you only have to do it one time.
Yep.
Because whatever it says in that zoning or, I mean, in that subdivision regulations or in your design review manual, that gets residential and commercial, and you have told them in the municipal ordinance, you, I don't think you'd be heard to say, I read this and it said, look at the design review manual, I didn't know what that was. Well, you know, it's real simple to call somebody that does. And then you've only got one, you don't have three documents that have to line up.
Right.
So how do we fix things?
With, well, I think the first place you'd want to start to fix it would be in your, in your, in your design review manual and your subdivision regulations. Get what you want to protect, what you want to do, lay out your spec, your specifics, and then come back and revise the tree protection plan or the tree ordinance, so that it says, 13-401, or it says, says, for, for, if it's tree protection, for tree protection plan, see, design review manual such and such and such, or your subdivision regulations such and such. And hopefully, the people that will be reading this would know that if you're talking about a design review manual, it's commercial, but you could even put forensics, commercial, residential.
Who does this?
Who does what?
Who puts it, who does this?
That your job, whose job is that?
Well, once, once they got, once they got the information-
Would you like to say?
This is, let me just put my input into how we go from here. Will has been looking into our design review of all of our manuals, zoning ordinances, everything. And there's a lot of discrepancies in it. None of them match each book, as he explained while ago. Same thing with the tree ordinance. These all need to be incorporated to where I need, give me a flow chart where everything goes according to where it's supposed to go. And this is one of my requests to Tom Darty. When I meet with him as far as budget goes, I'm requesting that we go ahead and out, but Will's going to have to charge to do this, to get this done. These discrepancies go back to the late 90s, I think, Dr. Will.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We're, basically, as y'all know, we had the code workshop. 19 discrepancies that we and Frank Humbert located. We got those straightened out. And that particular thing, some of them addressed the tree ordinance. Some of them addressed different areas of the codes, design review. So until we get all of this under, on route, so to speak, we're going to have these discrepancies. So I'll, probably within the next couple of months, I'll be on the other side of the building, and I'm going to flow chart how things should go, so that we won't have these discrepancies.
I can give you a good example. When you had the town center overlay district adoption of all those requirements, one of the things in the town center that we jointly discovered when Hardee's came in was there's a maximum building setback from the front property line. And I, don't hold me to it, but I think it was something like 10 feet. Because the desire at the time was to create a sidewalk community of commercial and mixed-use type, type developments. So the town center overlay district has a maximum building, front building setback of 10 feet. I'm throwing that out there, don't hold me to it, but it's something in that range, 5, 10, 12, 15, something like that. Well, your landscaping ordinance and your design, or, excuse me, the landscaping requirements in the design review manual call for a minimum of a 40-foot landscape strip across all front property lines adjacent to public right-of-way. Well, you can't, you can't physically comply with both of those requirements. So that's just one example of the intentions of the history of revisions in any of these documents was good, but there was some, I guess, missed oversight in how that affected other sections of different documents. And so the cohesiveness is, is lacking.
What I'd like to see happen on here, if I sit on the tree board, is who gives a tree board their job? Or their challenge, or whatever you want to call it? Who says, this is what I want you to look at? What are their responsibilities? And when they hand it off back to the planning commission, am I right? They have final approval on it. What responsibility does a tree board have from that point on? We can't enforce any of that.
Right.
Recommendations.
No, we just like recommendations.
Yeah.
After, after we hand it off to them, the tree board's through with it.
Yeah.
Unless they request it to come back to it by the planning commission.
Correct.
I just want the right definitions in there, so that, I mean, how many times have we asked about MAPCO or, you know, and we have no control over that whatsoever. So we shouldn't be, to me, we shouldn't be doing it.
Right.
But, but if we have a recommendation to them, that's fine.
I think that what we kept coming back to MAPCO was about, where they were never, they were never in compliance with what we were going by, the landscaping, they were never in compliance.
But that's not our responsibility on the tree board anymore. That's the codes department, am I right? I'm just-
Yeah, I mean, the-
Nothing we can do about it.
The, the enforcement of a site plan and its progressive construction according to an approved plan is, is purely in the planning and codes department.
So who, I mean, somewhere in one of these ordinance is, it says, the city arbors is somewhere. So who goes to the planning commission, or is the codes department, it says, MAPCO's out of compliance?
The-
That should be the codes' job to go over and check on compliance. Am I right?
Well, let me ask this question.
That's just my opinion.
Their bond, their maintenance bond was released back when Don was here. So in essence, it's private property. In essence, we don't have any control of their private property, from what I've been told.
Unless it overhangs a public right-of-way.
Exactly, or is a safety hazard.
Poses a public safety or health issue.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to ask that too. When they, in their bond requirement, is landscape one of those that gets inspected before the bond is released?
Yes, Mr. Berkeley is one that been going out like it's Taco Bell. He, he, he said that was in compliance and also fast-paced. By the way, Taco Bell just looks fantastic. They keep the yard cut purty. They keep it fertilized, it's good green grass and everything, it's just a, it's just a nice setup, it really is.
I'd just ask for some clarity on, when does the tree board start on it? When they get through with their work, they pass it off to the planning commission. And from that point on, it's the planning commission or the codes department. That's my interpret, that's the way I look at it.
Yeah.
Because we have nothing else to do, we can't change anything because we want to, we can't enforce because it's here or there. It should be enforced, I'm not doubting that at all.
Right.
I think what we've always done is just sent recommendations to the board of commissioners.
But it needs to go to the planning commission.
Well, somewhere in this, it says that we report to the B O C. I cannot tell you where I just read that again, but yes, that we send the, that we approve the plans for the landscaping and send that to the planning commission, everything else goes directly to the B O C.
And that's something we need to change, if it's a recommendation, it should go back to the planning commission.
Well, it should refer to that, or the codes department of its enforcement, because they have the authority to write citations, the planning commission don't.
And that's something that Mike and codes department need to work closely with.
And you talk to Mike, who's already coming to the staff-
Right.
...review, which sometimes if he's got questions in there, and he's, he's actually made statement, I like this plan, and you know, this should, should be a fine plan. You know, so that, I think that's a very beneficial thing, that now that he's coming to those staff reviews.
My, my main concern is that we are not weakening the intent of the original, why the Tree Commission was established to begin with. That we don't weaken that. That it suddenly becomes just, we can just cut down trees and we can not protect any kind of wooded areas, and-
Right.
I mean, that's my concern, that it's going to be weakened. And what I'm hearing more and more is that, oh, well, we're taking that out of the design review, because that's not part of it. And so, you know, who has authority to decide making these changes that need to be? Who has the authority to decide what comes in, what goes out?
The planning commission.
The planning commission has the authority over the subdivision regulations and now the design review manual. The B O C has authority over the zoning ordinance. The B O Z can't act to change or revise the zoning ordinance without a recommendation from the planning commission.
So as an advisory board, the Tree Commission does their work and sends it to us. And then we decide and send our recommendation to the board of commissioners.
What, what I envision as being the most advantageous for the city is that the Tree Commission move to lessen their role in specific review of site plans and subdivisions and that sort of thing. And increase their role in advising on the criteria that the site plans and the sub regs should be reviewed against pertaining to landscaping. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No.
The, so, so-
The-
Can I jump in here real quick to, so it's after this conversation and kind of see, so what, basically what Will's trying to say is, the tree board sets the rules of what goes into the tree protection, the, what trees to use, the tree list, everything.
I, I wouldn't even go that far. I would say, is an advisory board to the planning commission and the B O C to set those rules.
Okay.
So the Tree Commission says, hey, we want to change the 10-inch threshold to 6 inches. And you make that recommendation to the planning commission, and then that follows the chain up to the B O C as a recommendation from the Tree Commission. And so, those bodies, those legislate, one legislative body, one planning commission body, they say, yeah, we like that recommendation from the tree board, we think it should be, that threshold should be changed, and therefore we will adopt the changes necessary to lessen that threshold. So that's where I think you can increase the Tree Commission's, I guess, influence and efficiency, is actually making recommendations to set the parameters. But I think you should lessen their role in specific review of specific plans. That role should be relegated to the planning commission, as it's, as it is now, really, in writing. Along with your assistance in staff review and in your reporting to the planning commission, you know, you still provide the same oversight, but it's a one-stop shop for not only developers, but also the city to say, there's, there's not this potential for something falling between the cracks because of a change, or we thought they were looking at it, they thought we were looking at it, that sort of thing. So does that, and so then you become, the Tree Commission becomes a board that meets for the purpose of setting big picture parameters on landscaping requirements, retention of existing trees, and to advise on those types of things. And gets away from the day-to-day through the Tree Commission. Your day-to-day transitions to the planning commission. And then I would even say, you know, in here, there's two specific responsibilities of the city arbors, none of which, neither of which state that, let me see.
13-16. The city arbors should administer the rules governing the planning maintenance and removal of trees on the city or other public sites in the city.
So the city arbors administers rules on, on, for planning and stuff on public, public lands. And then it reports to the Tree Commission on a regular basis, should be in attendance at all regular and special meetings. So even now, you're, the city arbors isn't given the authority to even go look at sites within that thing. So I would even add that to say, the city arbors is also responsible for reviewing site plans as a, as a city staff personnel reviewing and making recommendations on site plans in accordance with the adopted landscaping requirements to the planning commission. And then also would be responsible, and, and then would also be responsible for reporting to the codes department on deficiencies that you've noticed in the field. Because, you know, Mr. Bledsoe is, is good at his job from a building perspective, but I'm sure he would welcome a report, you know, to say, hey, these are- Yeah, exactly. And so then he handles the enforcement. You've made him aware of it, you've reported that in writing as a monthly report, or however, you know, internally we want to do it. You report back to the Tree Commission and says, I've, this was my monthly report for deficiencies to the city, so city codes department. And, and we could also report that to the planning commission, so.
And that should be on anything that we still maintain a bond on.
Correct.
Until that's, until that's completed.
Unless there's a public safety or health issue.
Exactly.
Correct. That's correct. Because the, the site development agreements within that agreement, and see, that's, that's a fourth document that there's, there's requirements for ongoing maintenance and upkeep of landscaping on private property, even beyond the binding requirement in that development agreement. And it basically says, paraphrasing, that, you know, if any, if any landscaping dies, that they'll replace it. I don't even know that it gives a certain time amount.
Forever.
No, I'm saying that I don't know that it gives a time amount of how long they have to replace it. Does that make sense? So we've, we've identified, this tree is dead, you have X number of weeks or months to replace it. I don't think that's defined in that agreement.
Well, no, because there's always the planting season, I mean, you know, nobody's going to replace a tree in August because it's going to die.
Correct, correct. So there's a lot of working pieces here, complexities that you have a great opportunity to simplify, to reduce headaches and friction. You know, I understand there's been friction, you know, in the past, so, and I know we're, we're running against seven o'clock, but I hope that's helped, I hope you see some, some opportunity. One other thing I'll, I'll mention, as, as, as I've, I've mentioned, I think, to Mike and some others, that your current structure is a reprimand or a punishment structure for removal of trees. You state in general terms, if trees are removed that exceed that 10-inch threshold that are not accounted for, then there's repercussions. That becomes and has been very difficult- That becomes and has been very difficult to enforce. And it actually says, if it's removed within, I think, one year, at one point it was five years, then it changed to one year before the property's zoned commercial. We all know of properties that were currently zoned residential, they clear-cut them, they went and got them rezoned to commercial so they could specifically avoid that requirement for commercially zoned properties of accounting for those losses of trees. What I see as more beneficial and truly an opportunity, instead of a punishment process, a rewarding process. So you set your criteria for all new sites. Let's, let's just use Hardee's for, no, Hardee's ain't a good one, because it doesn't have any trees on it anyway. Let's say Walmart. We all know Walmart paid a nice penny for the trees that were removed. Let's say that you transition, you set your requirements. You say, Walmart, regardless of any existing trees on the site, this is what your finished site should look like from a landscaping perspective. This is how many, this is where they should be throughout the site, this is the type they should be. And then, as a reward, or as an incentive to retain existing trees, you say, however, these are your requirements. However, if you keep or retain existing mature trees, you get a certain credit towards a reduction of what those new requirements are. And that gives, that incentivizes the developer to retain existing trees, because it's in his best interest to do that financially, if, if it's feasible, you know, for the development of the project. So you incentivize that.
I think we do that. It's, yeah, I mean, that was the, the, the trees, it's set up that way. But since you're, you know, I mean, it's set up that way.
That's what the tree density worksheet was all about, is to say, okay.
If you save this.
If you don't cut down the tree.
Right.
And there were twenty-four-inch oaks to me.
Right.
Is that if you can sit, do everything you can by the design and work around, and, and Taco Bell's a perfect example, is that there was probably a hundred fifty-year-old white oaks in there.
Right.
Okay, and if, that, we're, everything we can do to say, okay, save that tree. If you don't, and you cut that tree down, then here's the replacement schedule, and here's the, by the tree density figures.
Right.
Okay, this is what you've gotta put back in. So it, I mean, you're looking at it like, well, it's a punishment, but we actually did give the incentive, say, we want you to, because you can never.
That's why the worksheet works.
You can never replace that hundred fifty.
Right, exactly.
And we, that's what we're all about here.
Okay, we're gonna have to wrap it up.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's the intention. I don't know in practice that that's actually the practicality of it. But, again, I think by reworking the documents, we can accomplish that, for sure.
Well, I just, I need to, I guess in my head, because I, you know, like you said, I've always said I'm a tree guy.
Okay, we're gonna take fi, a five-minute break, and come back in five minutes and start the planning commission meeting. Thank you so much for Debbie and Mike coming out, and, uh, Will, and Brandon for bringing this to the board.